Glad we have power here at Town Hall.
We have power, we have heat.
Yes.
Everything's good.
And I would just like to give a shout out to all the guys that have been out plowing for the last three days. And people are gonna criticize, but you know what? It's, I'm glad it's not me. I'm very thankful for the guy who comes down my road. I'm very thankful for the person who does that.
Awful.
So, thank you. Um, and we'll get through this, it's spring next week. Um, this is the part of the agenda where if there's any public comment, it's time to just make a comment or a question or anything, if it's not on the agenda. Alrighty. Um, I would like to, uh... Take the second hearing first and the first hearing, the one on the list too. Do you have the paper one there?
That's not that.
We're gonna do the minutes first.
Oh yeah, do we have, I don't, do we have minutes? We do have minutes, okay, very good. Perfect. Um, from February fifteenth, the minutes. Alrighty. That was our meeting. Our long evening meeting. Um, we approved minutes, we changed our hearing. Hearings, all of them start at seven oh five, so we can take them in no particular order or wise order. And so that was good. Um, and we heard the hearing on the Landry's about chickens, I believe, first?
Yes.
Can you push it down a little, please?
Yep, absolutely.
There you go. And then, um, we, I think we talked about the chickens, and we talked about where to place it, and we approved that. And then, Mrs. Labrie came in and talked about the, um, animal, the farm group and the bylaws.
She mentioned.
And, um, we got the variance through, and then we went to Island Road. And we continued that till this evening. So, um... We all heard a lot of testimony that evening. So, and we also had a lot of things to do in regards to that. So, um... That's the summary of the, the, the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve them as written?
Motion to approve them as written.
Do I, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Perfect, thank you. It was a late night.
It was a late night, nine twenty-seven.
Yes.
May I make a suggestion for this evening?
Yes.
Um, that we hear the hearing for thirty-three Walnut Street first, because that should be fairly quick.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll do that fine. So, um, are there any members of the board that would have a conflict of interest in hearing the Walnut Street application?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Alrighty, thank you, and I do not either. So, wanna read the notice?
Well, yeah. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven oh five P M. to discuss the application for a special permit submitted by owner ERG revocable trust, Robert Grady Trust, to convert the existing two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling for property located at thirty-three Walnut Street, also known as Assessor's Map five B three parcel one twenty-four, Winchton, Mass. oh one four seven five. Said property is located in a P D planned development district. The hearing will be held in the second floor auditorium at the Town Hall, one oh nine Front Street, Winchton, Mass. oh one four seven five. All interested persons should plan to attend. Alternative translation and accommodation for disabled persons is available by advance request.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, would the applicants please come to the table? Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
And can you, I need to swear you in that you'll tell the truth. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and would you state your name for us?
My name is Eric Grady. I actually have my dad, the owner, Robert Grady, on the phone here.
Okay, alrighty. Is he gonna?
You may have a seat, Eric, too.
Sure, yeah. Is he gonna talk about this?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Dad, go ahead.
Um, good evening. Thank you for entertaining my request for a special permit. I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
Oh yeah, I think you need to swear your dad in also.
Dad, hold on. You're gonna have to be sworn in first, hold on.
Yes. Hi, Mr. Grady. Um, would you swear to tell the truth on this testimony, please? Thank you. There we go. Okay, could you explain the application, please?
Eric, I can't hear them.
She'd like you to explain the application.
Okay, um, as you may or may not know, I purchased thirty-three Walnut Street about a year and a half ago. It was previously a three-family. It had been turned into a two-family with a, a business. When I purchased the home, it had been used as a single family that a couple of gentlemen, um, basically did just had a bunch of people living all throughout the house. It was set up as two units, a first floor and a second floor. When we purchased the home, we met with, um, uh, building inspector Newton, and we opted to turn the first floor into two separate units with the plan to, at some point upon completion of those two units, to turn the second, third floor back into a, a, a unit, which would make for three, um, total units. And according to the bylaws, uh, five point two, point one C, I have to come before the board to get a special permit in order to do that. That's my understanding.
Alrighty, thank you very much. And we saw a picture in, as part of the application. Had a letter from here. We saw the letter, um, to Nicole in our packet. Whoops, there we go. So... Timeline. It was a one-family?
This was a, it was a two-family with a business.
Okay.
And then when Don O'Neil and Bob O'Keefe bought it, they used it as a single family.
Okay.
So, he'd like to turn it into a three-family. And you can see on the property card, I gotta flip it all the way over. The one oh one indicates a single family.
Okay.
And the one oh four is a two-family.
Okay.
So it would've just changed the use code to a three-family.
Gotcha.
Yep. And they have two units, two separate units. It's like a duplex on the first floor currently, right now. And they would be using the, what would be the second and third floor as one unit with, you know, one unit with two stories. So it just, it would be a three-family.
So was it ever a three-family document, documented?
No.
No.
Not that I know of.
But it was a business and two-family?
Yep, she had a tanning salon there, correct? Yep, yep.
Alright. Um, can you go flip down to the, um, bylaw notes about external evidence? It's allowed in that zone with a special permit?
With a special permit. You get a look at number C or number, or letter D. Um... C or, C or F, really?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Either one could apply. But either way, it would be a special permit for use as a three-family in the P D zone.
Okay. Um... In the notes section, it says provided there's no structural evidence of occupancy by more than, um... Are, are we gonna meet that, um, regulation as far as the size of the unit?
Um, for that, for what they're going to do. Eric, do you wanna speak on that?
What was the question?
Um, the, in the notes section, it talks about the, um, size of each unit.
Line ten, or...
Right.
Notation number ten. So it's kinda putting perimeters on, uh, one-bedroom or two-bedroom or whatever. So do you know what you wanna do with it as far as one or two bedrooms? In this square footage?
So, Dad, what did you wanna do with the third unit? How many bedrooms?
It'll have a total of five bedrooms, no more than five. Um, that's what the, um, the, um, Mass. General Law, chapter one forty-eight, section twenty-six allows me with the fire code, um, up to five rooms, not to exceed five rooms. So it'll be five total bedrooms with a living room, kitchen, um, another sitting area, and a bathroom and a half.
Five bedrooms for the third unit?
For the whole building?
But how many for the third unit?
That, that would be for the third unit.
Five bedrooms for the third unit.
That'll be just the third unit.
For this property, they, they rent out individual rooms. So the first floor is broken up into how many bedrooms, Eric? Is it five bedrooms?
Four.
Five and five?
Three units of four bedrooms.
Four and four, yep. So we'd, suggestion would probably be to go off of F multifamily dwellings up to four units per lot. And this would be just for a four-unit.
That way it's not...
Mm-hmm.
Because it isn't really a single family. I mean, it is, but it isn't.
Yeah, it was a single family, and they just kinda sliced it in half, if you will, on the first floor and made it a duplex.
Okay.
It was only converted, converted back to a single family when the owner was told that they would have to convert the electric system to separate it into individual units, and the cost overweighted what they wanted to do. So they instead reverted it back to a single family.
Okay.
And then rented it out as a whole. And then whoever lived there subbed it to other people. So that's why it was originally changed back from a two to a one.
Alright.
But we upgraded the power system to four hundred amp service. We have, um, everything for three units, you know, available, so it's all permitted now correctly.
Did the building inspector have any comments for?
Uh, he did allow the first floor to occur.
Okay.
And he's been overseeing the building permits, and he'll oversee this one for this conversion.
Okay.
Kind of a unique situation with, um, how it's, how it's divvied up.
So in, in number, in the provision ten here, it just says two-bedroom unit or more, the minimum would be seven hundred fifty square feet. It doesn't really say how many square feet per bedroom, right? So...
So the second and third floor consists of a lot only seven hundred and fifty.
I would think so, if you got that many bedrooms in it.
Right now, I'm only able to utilize the first floor, so I have two floors that are, I mean, I can't insulate it and do stuff like that unless I get the permits for them, and they don't wanna do that unless it's a...
Right.
I have a lot of space, I can't use it at the moment.
Sure. Alright, um... Any questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Do we have enough information?
I think so.
Have you had any, uh, input from your butters or anything like that? Anything for or against?
It's a corner lot. We own the property next to it as well.
Yeah.
So we are our own neighbors there. Um, every other neighbor we get along with pretty well. One of the houses is foreclosed on, they're doing some stuff with that, so they're kind of occupied. Um, we're also not gonna extend the footprint of the house at all. It's all, all the renovations.
It's all within there, yeah. What about parking?
Parking, um, we're gonna, right now, there's one parking lot in the front, but we're gonna get rid of the lawn in the front and make it one parking lot for combination of everybody.
So it'd be enough for B mountain, right? Okay. Alright, yeah, that's all I got.
Alright, well, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would someone like to propose a, a motion? Make a motion in regards to this?
So I make a motion to, uh, accept the applicant's proposal, um, as is. Assuming they comply with all, uh, building current laws and such, and that's it.
Alrighty, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. Tell your dad we voted yes.
Alright, tell him I said thank you, and it was nice working with him.
Thanks.
Good luck, guys. Take care.
Good luck.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, so now we move on to...
Six Island.
Six Island Road, and...
Have we seen this one before? I don't remember.
I'm not.
Alrighty. So we would like to thank you for the reading comprehension check.
Yeah.
Before we open the meeting, you would... We are volunteers at the zoning board of appeals.
Some light, some light reading.
Yeah.
And it took combined hours to read and digest what you were writing. So I just want to thank you for that thorough email. I mean...
And I, and I think next time he needs to send along Dunkin' Donuts cards or something, so we can absorb everything in.
Yes. They, oh, exactly. Thank you very much for, um...
Like, a, 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 a book on tape next time, maybe?
Yes, reading all seventy-eight pages.
Book on tape next time.
So that being said, ahead of time, may I entertain a motion to reopen the hearing on Six Island Road?
I'll, I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just for the record, all of us were here at the beginning of this hearing, and we're all here now, so, um...
God for power.
We all have power and electricity and internet and all good things, so...
Uh, thank you. Thanks for taking the time to read the, the memo. So I wrote the memo...
Could you, uh, just lift your microphone up, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I wrote this memo because I just was unclear on the application of the fifty percent rule. So, um, I tried to, um, probably from someone who's not using the rules regularly, give you my perspective of them are looking at other zoning rules throughout the Commonwealth. Uh, so when we start looking at a rule that I'm not familiar with, I would go first to, to the statute, and that tells me the genesis of the rule. In the statute in Massachusetts, what we do is we separate, when we talk about non-conforming structures and uses, but we'll just talk about structures, we separate two things out. We separate non-conforming structures, all of them, except for, over here, we put single-family and two-family homes. Put those differently. And when we're talking about non-conforming structures regularly, or generally speaking, uh, we can't expand them at all, regardless of whether they conform or, or expand the, the non-conformity or not expand the non-conformity. And the, and in the letter, I gave the example, if I had an industrial building, and it was non-conforming, but I had a great backyard, and I could build within the zoning footprint there, I could not do that absent a, a special permit from the zoning board. If I had a house that was non-conforming, and I could build that without increasing the quote-unquote "non-conformity", and there's some cases that talk about what that is, and they, so I use the word "increase" or "intensify" the non-conformity. Um, um, I can, I can expand my structure. Need some water?
I think...
Can we take a break?
Thanks, I'm okay.
I'll say...
Thank you, sorry.
So, um, we can expand a non-conformity, uh, as long as it, uh, we can expand a non-conforming single-family and two-family home, um, how, as long as we're not intensifying that non-conformity. So when I look at the fifty percent rule, I see we have section A, which is the general rule about how to deal with non-conforming structures, all of them. And then there's this expect, exception for two-family and single-family structures. Uh, and I understand that that follows the statute. And then we have the fifty percent rule, which I believe really qualifies section B. Section B tells us, when the building office receives an application to, for a single-family or a two-family home, whether or not the project will intensify the non-conformity. So if we look through those, that list there, and so we can identify those projects that won't expand the non-conformity. But when we go back to section A, the sentence is, um... In addition, no such buildings, and such buildings would be single-family homes and two-family homes uh, that are not, that do not require a special permit, because we're not expanding the non-conformity. Those buildings can't be done without a special permit if they expand by fifty percent. So I think the fifty percent rule is focused primarily on determining whether or not a project should be referred to your board for review. Once the project on a single-family or two-family is referred to your board, then I think what we do is we operate under section C and under section C only. We don't go back to section B, because that is no longer relevant to our inquiry anymore. We're past that issue. We've determined that there's been an intensification of a non-conform, conformity, and therefore we apply. And in section C, there is no limitation to fifty percent. It's a simple special permit determination of allowing for the, and I'm using the word "project" for reconstruction or extension or alteration, when it's determined that the proposed modification would not be substantially more detrimental to the existing, uh, than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So I think, generally speaking, uh, I've written the memo to explain my position that the fifty, there's a two-step inquiry that we're making here. One is, because we've got this special category, single-family and two-family, is there an intensification or an increase of the non-conforming use? And so I could fall into paragraph, uh, B five, which I argue that I do. And, but if my building then exceeds fifty percent of the word "area," and I would love to talk about that for a few minutes, and I know that you guys have applied that in, with the history here, and so I'm going where angels fear to tread to disagree with you on that, okay? But, um, then I have to say, well, even if I comply with B, five B, but if my project exceeds fifty percent of this, this area, then I need to go get a special permit, and I have to come to you under paragraph C. So that's, that's the way that I think we interpret. That's consistent with the statute. The statute says that's the only finding that the board needs to make, is that it is that my project, a single-family home, uh, the expansion of the non-conforming, uh, is not substantially more detrimental than what is already there. With all of that being said, what I tried to do in the, in the, in the, in the letter was, um, try to identify all the different issues and make sure you had some type of documentation in connection with that. And it looks like I've got a couple extra documents, just in case other issues come up. So in the letter, um, I tried to put in alternative arguments, said, should you fail to agree with me that the fifty percent issue is not a limitation on your authority to issue a special permit in this case? And I, again, it's, I say it's not, I think it's been applied in the past the other way. Um, if you wanna issue, uh, if you wanna hold us to the fifty percent rule, then we have to talk about what does "area" mean? When I go through your ordinance, and it has been changed over the years, it was a prior ordinance where we, um, it was actually a Winchton case, and the ordinance was discussed, I wish I had brought it, but it was, it seemed to be less relevant to me, um, because it was dealing with uses and not structures, and that's a whole separate distinction. But in that prior ordinance, we used to use in Winchton, um, um, uh, "area," defined as floor area or, or lot area in this increased issue. That went away in this most recent revision, uh, as far as I can see. And, uh, we're stuck with this, this, just this word "area."
Well, just to interject right...
Yeah.
Here, um, we did have the coverage of the lot being a relevant, um, consideration before they changed the zoning to the special lake overlay. So now we have different amounts of setback, and you can technically build up to ten feet from the...
Side boundary.
You know, from the side, side setbacks. And it's far more generous than covering fifty percent of your lot on some of those small lots. So yes, indeed, that was changed, um, in the recent zoning bylaw change revision. However, I do believe its Mass. General Laws and Winchton bylaws are in, in sync in regards to expanding the fifty percent rule.
So...
Fifty percent non-conformity.
Non-conformity. So, so your, your decision, uh, uh, or what you're telling me then is, is you're gonna issue, if you can issue a special permit, if you decide, first of all, you make the finding that it's, if it is substantially not more detrimental, then you may consider issuing a special permit, but you're still seeing that fifty percent rule as a limitation as to what we can do after that?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes and no. This board has granted slightly more than fifty percent, but definitely not more than a hundred percent.
Okay.
Not even up to.
Not even, fifty-one or fifty-two, not even close to a hundred percent.
And I would just say also that I, I can certainly appreciate your different, uh, interpretation of what it says when it says in addition. I kinda see it as not referencing the, uh, uh, one or two-family home, but I see it as referencing the pre-existing non-conforming structures, which are outlined in the very beginning of that. So I kinda apply it to that. Do you know what I'm saying?
I to, and I agree, and I, I've looked at that, that's a very, so the, the, the language "such buildings," what does "such buildings" mean?
Right.
And so the only two considerations that I could think of was the non-conforming structures excluding single-family homes, or the single-family and two-family homes. But it couldn't mean both of them to me, because we have a complete separate, we have a specific exception in A about single-family and two-family homes. It's a, right, it's really tracks the statute very closely. It says, we've got, we're gonna talk about non-conforming structures here, and we, here's our rule about that. However, um, uh, no special permit is needed for reconstruction, non-conforming, single-family, two-family homes, um, if you're not increasing the non-conformity.
Correct. And so in the case, case in point, um, homes on Lake Monamak have burnt to the ground. You can burn the exact, uh, you can burn, you can build the exact same footprint...
Yep.
And the same thing without a special permit.
Sure.
So if you're increasing the non-conformity by adding to the four, you know, adding to the footprint... Adding to the side or rear setbacks, we've had a lot of experience with, with these in the, in the, in the past twenty or thirty years, and, um, so we have granted special permits. Um, it's not outside of our purview to do so. What we want to do is, like you say, make the finding and the, and the, the board has to make finding that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood, that it's within the intent of the zoning...
Okay.
As established by our zoning bylaws. But just a variance, in my mind, you don't need variances for this project. You, I don't think.
I've, I've got a hail mary variance request in there, just in case I, I find myself down in the fourth quarter.
Correct, but I do not think you need a, a variance. Um, the special permit is something that's allowed with board review. And that's the difference between a variance is something that would never be allowed. This is a, this is something that needs to meet those three criteria, size, shape, topography of the lot, some special hardship or some special consideration. And that's where a variance and a special permit differ. Special permit, anytime a business changes hands, in many cases, they need a special permit, because it goes with the, in business cases, to operate a business in certain places, it goes to the owner. And, you know, if you, you do something differently and the ownership changes, we need a new special permit. Um, in this case, it would go because it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and by virtue of the, of the house on that lot, it needs special consideration in order to do anything above and beyond...
Yep.
Knocking that house down and putting the exact same modern structure on the exact same footprint.
Okay.
So that's where I think this board has, no case we hear takes precedence unlike other, other boards. Even though we're a quasi-judicial board, we can't say, well, we did it this way for ten years, and we're gonna keep doing it this way. Each case is an individual case. We hear each case on its own merits, on its own, um, own unique circumstances. If it was allowed by right, you could go to the building inspector and, and pull a permit. But you have to come before us, because it's a special si- situation that requires a special permit. So that's, I, I, I'm speaking for myself, but I think my board...
No, no, that's, that's the yardstick that we've used for all of our decisions regarding.
Right. Right, right.
And I appreciate getting the input because I'm trying, I hope to streamline tonight for us all.
Right, I think.
We sure we have power out at home or something that we need to address.
Exactly, my power came on at six o'clock tonight.
As I read this again, I, I still kind of, I go back. I, I almost think that where "in addition" started should have been a new paragraph because it's misleading. I, I, to me, it reads as if it belongs to the, to the very beginning of that, that six point two point three, pre-existing non-conforming structures. That's kind of how I read that.
And so I would.
I don't know how I can pick which one it goes to, you know?
Well, I mean, I, I actually thought that's a more beneficial interpretation because A is talking about all of those structures except for the single-family and two-family, and it's C, that's, that's where I'm coming in. I'm, my application for special permit is, in the event that the building commissioner determines that the non-conforming nature of a single or two-family residential structure would be increased by the proposed, I use the word "project." "The zoning board of appeals made by special permit allows such project where it determines that the proposed project will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure." And then, and I think that the chair has just advised us that, yes, we can go over fifty percent, and we have in the past, and every case is different. So I just feel that maybe, I think I've said my piece on that. I certainly don't want to take up any more of your time than, than what I've already written and, and the exchange we've already had. I'm just thinking that I think the board unnecessarily constricts itself trying to apply the fifty percent rule to single families when you're issuing a special permit, not when we're trying to determine, is there an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure?
So, just to clarify on that whole idea, I'm gonna try to word this so that I'm as clear as I can be, being as it's.
Are you gonna take, are you gonna take fifteen pages and nine attachments?
I'm an educator, I'm a teacher, I have to speak to diverse learning styles. So, the fifty percent rule. We have, and through mass zoning and planning commissions and everything, much input, much case law reviewed, building inspector input, others who are smarter in zoning law than I am. My understanding that is, because it's a structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, anything you do to that, to modernize, will make it more non-conforming. If you add on another floor, if you add on a deck, if you change the driveways and the impervious. You know, driveways of the land. Anytime you make a significant change, we're not as bad as some communities where I grew up, where if you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot where I grew up, and you want to change the color of your house, you have to go get a special permit. There are some historic districts in towns like Acton, Boxwell, Bolton, Berlin, that way, Clinton, that you cannot change a white house and turn it yellow. You have to go to a special permit. So that's, and those are pre-existing non-conforming structures in a historical district, which adds a whole different layer of it. But we're just, my personal feeling as the chair of this board is that anytime you try to add on to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family, we don't allow two families in that zone anyways. Anytime you change the, the floor plan, the living space, the, the coverage of the lot, anything, it requires a special permit. And I think that must be where the building inspector is coming from too, otherwise we wouldn't be hearing these cases regularly.
I, I met with the building commissioner, and I can't purport to read his mind, but he issued a building permit because he looked at this as it was solely on the current floor plan, and then it was revoked, my understanding, because the, because of the fifty percent rule then requires the referral. Again, the expansion of the non-conformity is being increased because it, because it breached the fifty percent rule. And now we go get a special permit, which is just a simple finding that's not limited by the fifty percent rule. The fifty percent rule is just telling us on single-family homes and two-family homes that we have to come here.
And quite frankly, that math may be where the board has tread before. We have given slightly over fifty percent.
Slightly over, absolutely.
So if I can, I'd be happy to go through some of my calculations. I got them on page eight of my, I think we can call it a missive. It seems to be something more than a letter. So I argue again in my letter about, well, how, what do you mean "area" in your, in your bylaw? And I do know that there's quite a bit of reliance on the, the assessor's office calculation. And the assessor's office did give us an email, and I, I think I'm gonna disagree with it, and I'm gonna agree with it because that's how clear I want to be with you guys. But it comes and says, one thousand fifty-two square feet, that's what he says here. And he goes on, though. He says, "The first floor of this home is the one above grade. The basement is sub-level. I would assume," that's an important word, "that the main entrance would be the one on this level." I find it subjective, meaning it's open to interpretation. And when I've served on zoning boards in the past, just, we have always never gone by, whatever the assessor's office says the use of the property is, is not what we consider the use is. Whatever their calculations are, aren't necessarily what, so, but he says it would be subjective, whether or not they use this or the one in the basement regardless of the frontage, meaning which door faced on the front. So Massachusetts Building Code is, is in the, is telling us that it's not really subjective, that every primary entrance to a house, and I have a copy of it for everyone if you wanted to see it. It's seventy, seven eighty CMR fifty-one. "The primary egress door shall be side-hinged." Shall provide a minimum clear width of thirty-two inches. So when they built this house, the front door, they dug down, and they put that front door in the basement, and they had to because that's the building code. So all of the area in the basement is living space. And if we look at the architectural rendering, we've got heated rooms in the basement, and it's subjective, according to the assessor himself, as to, as to how the building is used. If I look at the assessor's card, he ident.
So I don't think, our calculations aren't based on living space. We calculate decks, front door space, so the basement, the area of the basement, in my mind, you don't have to argue that point.
So if I just used, I, I would say so, yeah.
Yeah, true?
True, well, that's what we've used.
That's what we've done. So, living, living space, non-living space, we've talked about basements, we've talked about.
Decks, and the, and, and that is the.
We're not talking about adding a bedroom on a sewer plant, you know? We're talking about how much, what do we have now, and what is it going to look like in the future?
Okay, so.
That's how we've done it.
That's how we've done it, that's how we've done it many times. And so.
So the floor area describes how to measure the sum of the gross floor area of each building stories measured from the exterior limits of the faces of the structure, but not including the unfinished basements and attic. So what I did is I put one together with just everything in there, and then I used the architectural renderings, and I attached those for your review of the existing structure. And I wanted to remove out the crawl space because I think that's in the spirit of the definition of floor space in the bylaw, and I removed the mechanical room because I felt that that was in the spirit of the bylaw. And I came to a total calculation of twenty-four thousand five, twenty-four thousand, yeah, twenty-four hundred and fifty-eight feet.
Okay.
And I have that here on page nine.
That's current.
That is the current situation as measured out by mass architects, and I attached their rendering.
And it's also in sync with the property assessor's card.
It, it matches much of the property assessor's card in the sense that they come up with twenty-four fifty-eight as well. So they have twenty-four fifty-eight, I'm sorry, and I, yeah, we both come to twenty-four fifty-eight. But that's what they call gross area.
Okay, and that's how, that's what we look at.
So my client is looking to simply take off a six-foot structure, a six-foot pitched roof. So in other words, from the, from the bottom of the, of the first, the top of the first floor to the peak of the roof, it's six feet up and the pitch comes down. She wants to remove that roof. She wants to build, and we said to you last, the builder was here, and we said eight, it's nine feet. Okay? She wants to put a nine-foot story on top of that building, and then put the six-foot pitched roof back on the top. So we'll be looking to increase the height of the building by six feet. And I did take a look at the height because I remember that being an important issue. So the interesting thing that I did remind myself was chimneys are not included in the calculation.
Yes, and our building inspector confirmed that.
And so what I had to do, because I just couldn't have any more soft costs available for additional engineering, is I took two documents and I put them together. One is Mr. Green's Certified Landscape Architect Restoration Plan, where he sets out very faintly, and I did bring my magnifying glass, if anybody wants to see it, the different elevations on the property. And I took that and I coupled that together with the architectural rendering of what is actually there, and he was able to show us heights.
Benny, what page are you looking at, please?
I'm sorry?
What page are you looking at?
So if we can go to, it's gonna be page after sixteen to show the height of the building. I think it's going to be page seventeen eighteen. It's gonna be very, it's, unfortunately, the architectural drawing didn't give me a good page number. But it's gonna be sheet zero of the architect's rendering.
Nineteen of the PDF.
Yeah, I think it's nineteen.
That should be A, that's B, and then, then you're gonna go past C and go to attachment B.
Oh, there we go. Page twenty-one, I believe.
Yeah, I'm not numbered. Oh, no, I am.
You're on twenty-eight, gotta go backwards the other way.
I'm on page fifteen.
I'm looking at the PDF on the top. In the top of the PDF reading?
Just the.
Thirty, twenty-nine.
Can I just interject?
Sure.
She, okay, I'm sorry, we're going to that one, that page right there?
Yes.
That what you're looking for? So if we look at that page, what Mr. Green does in his drawing is he identifies the elevation of the property for us. And the elevation of this property is relevant because in your definition of height, you want to identify what the mean height of the land is. And that's where our, we, we go to measure. I touched base with Mr. Green, I don't have a mean elevation for you. But I have, I can clearly define for you that whether the mean elevation is the lowest elevation, i.e. the top of the lake at the very bottom of this property, or if it's the highest elevation, the top of this knoll at the very northern end of the property, this building, as it's constructed with a nine-foot additional story, will fall within the height restrictions for the town. And I break out all that, that math for us here on page twelve of the letter. And it's interesting because the, knowing that that structure is what it is, and I know that the height is on sheet zero of the architectural rendering, twenty feet and three and a half inches from the bottom of the basement door. I'm assuming there's probably a footing underneath that, but I don't have that from the architect, but the bottom of the basement door to the height of this structure. So in other words, if the mean elevation was the bottom of the ditch, then the height of the structure is twenty feet, three inches.
Okay.
And if I add nine feet to that, I'm only gonna be at twenty-nine feet.
Okay.
So I have, there is no, there is no mathematical calculation that would bring our mean elevation to a point where we're gonna trigger the thirty, the thirty-five feet rule. If the mean elevation comes up higher towards the sill, if you will, you can see the sill on the architectural rendering, that's only shrinking my height from the perspective of the zoning bylaw because as the mean goes up, the building is gonna be seen as shorter, which would give me actually more relief. So I'm well within the height criteria, and I would, again, be happy to further review that with you. I think if we're accepting the square footage calculation and we are accepting the height calculations, I think we just go to the impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, hold on one, one second, step back for one second. The addition, the square footage of the addition, I think you had the calculations of that?
It's nine, it's, it is the exact amount of the first floor.
So it's nine hundred and.
Nine hundred, and then I would add, one second. Can I have to refer to my letter because I don't remember that fact off the top of my head? I apologize. Because there's a small, there's a deck on top of that. It's a total of twelve hundred and eighteen square feet. It's, the interior second floor, floor area would be nine hundred and seventy-six, and the additional deck, which is gonna be ten feet by twenty-four feet, will come ten feet out from the building towards the lake. And the building is twenty-four, it's actually twenty-four and a quarter, twenty-four feet and twenty-four and point two-five feet.
Ten by twenty-four?
Ten by twenty-four, point two-five. I have the calculation on page nine. And that would be two hundred and forty-two and a half square feet of decking. So the nine seventy-six and the two forty-two point five would be twelve, one thousand two hundred eighteen fifty-six, which would be less than fifty percent of the twenty-four fifty-eight twenty-four.
That's just the deck?
Wait, 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 what are we looking at right now? This is the adjusted total?
The total, yep, the, the, the total, the grand total is twelve, is one thousand two hundred and eighteen point fifty-six square feet. The breakdown on that would be the second floor is nine hundred seventy-six point zero six square feet. And the deck would be two hundred and forty-two point five square feet.
So Nicole, scroll down just again. This is the grand total of the addition proposal?
Yes, yep. I can show you that math, it's on page nine towards the top. Now, obviously, the deck, you have some area there. If you're concerned on square footage, there's area there that we could, you know, this, it's a coming out ten feet from the building. If it came out eight feet from the building, it would shrink the, the square footage there.
All right.
I did provide for your, let's see, I did have a little bit of a discussion on.
Is there a typo on the, on this one? It says total enclosed structure floor, first floor, and then it says the same on the bottom. Should one of those say second floor? Because you've got the unenclosed deck and then the total enclosed structure on the second floor, is that?
I, I don't know, that looks like that there is a typo. Can I, can I look at that quickly? Make sure that doesn't throw the math off.
I don't think it makes, the, it's just the label, it's not the, the math.
Yeah, the numbers are good, it's just the label on it.
I think it's just the label, the math is fine.
Let me, let me, can I please just confirm that?
The numbers are the same, which tells me one should be the first floor, one should be the second floor. Because it's got the second deck.
Right.
Just the same.
Right.
So I'm just gonna suggest that, that, that whole line actually is, is a duplicate and it should not be there, because this calculation of two hundred and fifty-eight twenty-four represents these numbers. The adjusted basement, removing the mechanical room and removing the crawl space, the total first floor, the total, I call the deck one, and the total deck two, because that's how the architect rendered them. And this, this thing is, is, it is a typo and should actually be struck. And I just verified that the eight seventy-six and the nine seventy-six and the four oh five and the two hundred come to twenty-four hundred and fifty-eight square feet. So my concern was that that nine hundred number got added in, it did not. So that's the calculation.
Okay.
And you're looking at on twelve eighteen
Yes, sir.
to that.
Yep, so if I divide the
So it's about, about fifty percent.
It's forty-nine and a half percent.
Nine and a half percent.
So I guess if we are accepting this square footage calculation, then I do fall back under paragraph B, section five, where I'm building within the entire single, the footprint of the structure. And therefore, I would then argue that I would be entitled to build this as of right and that the building commissioner's initial decision to issue the building permit was correct and the revocation of that was the incorrect decision. And then, and I can be willing to be wrong on that if we are able to go through the, and if, and if we want to, I can certainly talk about a detriment to the neighborhood issue.
All right. You guys see the math on that?
Yep.
Forty-nine point five.
Is my math right?
Yeah.
I'm a lawyer, you know, I'm not
All right.
I could be happy to proceed to the detriment to the neighborhood unless you wanna just stay on the by right news.
Let's just process this and see if we have any questions about this. Are we all on the same page as far as we have a proposal here that's under fifty percent?
As being shown to us, it is under fifty percent.
Under fifty percent.
So, and like the
And I would almost say that you could make it a little bit more under fifty percent if you do add that mechanical room and the crawl space back in. Probably not the crawl space if it's not paved, but the mechanical room.
Here we are, I mean, he's where he needs to be as far as that goes and so
Yes, it's far less non, I mean, it's way streamlined from the first proposal that we saw.
Because the first one was like a hundred percent or something, right, it was a lot.
It was a hundred and fifty percent or two hundred percent, it was huge.
So it was a big difference, so
It is a big difference.
That's certainly
All righty. The only one question I have too, is there a deck off of that sec, the new proposed second floor?
Yes, there's going to be
And that is not in the calculations of the
That is in the, that, yes, if I can just address that. If I go back to page nine of my letter,
Uh-huh.
What I tried to do is break out this addition of the second floor to nine hundred and seventy-six point zero six square feet. The new second floor deck would be ten by twenty-four point two five square, feet, for a total of two hundred and forty-two.
So that's where we're going over the fifty percent?
No, and that'll bring us to a grand total of one thousand two hundred and eighteen point five six.
That's already calculated in.
That was calculated in?
We already did that.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
Yes, yep.
So that's within that deck.
All right, thank you for clarifying, I missed that.
It's on the top of page nine.
Okay.
And if the decision would be to certainly condition my project on these dimensions, I would have no problem doing that too, just so we can certainly verify that those, that those would be what the dimensions are.
Okay.
My only other thought, just in an effort to keep us moving in a direction, would be if the gentleman representing the abutter may want to oppose the square footage calculation or talk about that in any way. And then if we have that issue, then I could go into the, whether or not there's a substantial hardship to the neighborhood and then argue for my special permit at that point.
Do you, Mr. Glennie, do you have any objections to the square footage calculations?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I guess that the objection I would have is that any square footage that was allowed, that violated zoning, even though the building permit was issued, cannot be considered in this calculation. So there were decks that were put on this house less than ten years ago that did not meet zoning at the time. They can't be considered for calculating the square footage of area for this proposal, because they violated, they basically extended the non-conforming use of the property. And for zoning purposes, ten years hasn't gone by, they can't use that as part of the calculation. Now, I can't tell you what that exact square footage is, because I can't go take a tape measure and find out what their decks are and where they sit, because it's not my property. But it's clear that there is, I don't wanna say a substantial amount, but an amount that will certainly put this over the fifty percent. So that's, as far as the square footage is concerned, that, that would be our objection.
Thank you.
Nicole, I think I had asked that question a couple of months ago, or whenever we were talking about this. Now, that is still considered because it was already there?
We are looking at what is currently there, yes.
Right.
And it's being taxed as, as is.
Yes.
And did we not drag up a building permit for at least one of those decks?
We did for the front deck.
Uh-huh.
We did not, we did not find one for the side.
Correct.
Or the back deck, as
So what my question was, Nicole, before, was do we go off the square footage from when the bylaw was implemented or when the building was made, depending on what came first? And is, because it's kind of the way it's worded is, you know, it's not as clear as it could be these days. So, so I didn't know what the intent was behind that, so I had reached out to try and find out what was intended by that. And so that's where she told me that.
You make a very good point. This is a very unique situation. I mean, it is a very unique situation. And several owners and several bylaw changes and the zoning overlay and things that were not done to meet conservation situations. We're well aware of all the unique situations of this, of this property. My understanding, like Nicole, I think, just said, is we're looking at what we have in front of us today, permit or not permit, because that's what's being taxed and that's what's being assessed. And if we wanted to, we, if the town had information about the the deck being built without a permit, we've had other situations in town where lenders will not lend money on a deck, on a structure, with outvarances because it doesn't meet
Even though a permit has been issued, that, the, the, the building permit in and of itself isn't the deciding factor when it comes to zoning. It's whether or not the ten-year period has run and whether or not it meets the current
Is it ten or is it seven?
It's ten, I believe it's ten.
Ten years.
And
Yes, it's ten, as you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so the fact that the building permit was issued, so, and as I put in my treatise that I sent
Did you send it?
prior to my brother's, I, I put in a footnote. Some people would say that the town not only could, but is obligated to, to, to pull those encroachments out. The building permit or not, they violate zoning, they didn't get the special permit or variance that was required. They should, they should make those disappear. That's the whole purpose of zoning. Otherwise, everybody's gonna go and build it and hope the ten-year runs.
So that may be true on something that maybe I did personally and I had been liable for. We do have notes that it was discussed and it was decided on. We don't have a permit, but we have something that says that it was discussed and allowed.
There was awareness.
Correct, so the, the proper, the, the owner at the time pursued the permit legitimately.
I, I would dispute that.
Okay.
I, I don't believe you can pursue a permit legitimately if, when you apply for the permit, you're not applying for the variances and the special permits that are required. In other words, you're, you're hoping that you're gonna get the permit without jumping through the hoops. And, you know, when, unfortunately, under zoning, you step into the footsteps of your predecessor. And, and that's what's happened here. Even setting aside the long history of the petitioner and what appears to be their idea that it's better to ask forgiveness than permission on this property.
I believe they asked permission.
I believe they've been asking for forgiveness for a number of things, which goes to the orders that have been presented.
I, right, I'm talking about the prior, prior owner.
I'm talking about the current one too.
That where the deck in question was applied for a permit.
For a permit, but again,
That one
A building permit doesn't require a hearing. It doesn't require, it doesn't allow the abutters to come in and discuss. And that's the whole point. That's why the building permit isn't the final factor in determining whether or not it's a zoning question. People, the, the case law is replete with, with building permits being issued, structures being put up, and them having to be torn down because they violated zoning.
You're not wrong.
Sure, it's definitely a legitimate point.
I gotta mark that statement down and the date.
I would, I would say that he is, but I just want to get my chance.
For the sake of argument, what is the square footage of the deck that we're, we're disputing? And then what does that look like numerically against the numbers?
Two hundred point seventy-seven square feet, unenclosed.
Which one?
It's the eight by
That one.
That one.
That's the one that exists right now.
That's the one on the side that they're contending is not. So hypothetically, if we took that out and added the square footage of the mechanical room back in, it would still be about fifty percent.
It would be That the back deck was extended also within the ten-year period. Because they, I believe they extended it at the same time, didn't they?
They did, yeah.
But that state, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't that run within the setback allowance? And not encroach further, am I right?
That corner, that ten by ten corner, whatever the measurement is, goes over your rear setback. At the time when those decks were built, it was a fifty-foot rear setback. And then it changed to twenty. It's still over the twenty. Previous homeowner didn't see the permit first. He also cut down trees on my property, put a bunch of riprap on my property. He got caught and he came in and filed a permit after the back of the deck.
That's the previous owner.
Yeah.
Previous owner, yes.
And that's what happened. And now that corner is well open and do not, that it was built inside the fifty, do not disturb, no bill. And then the rear was, was built over the fifty foot at the time, now over the twenty. And it's still over the twenty, basically over, the house is basically twenty feet. And at the time of the site visit, if you recall, Mr. Prusiterian himself was, even at the time, was standing there, planting on trees and he comes over and he was telling you, I don't know, we gotta get rid of that deck, we gotta get rid of that deck, you know, over the chateau, chateau, and here we are, still looking into the plan.
All right.
So
So
With, with the numbers, with just that deck removed, we're looking at fifty-three point nine, so fifty-four percent is what, is what we're looking at for the number there, so just to put that out there.
However, the deck is there.
Not disputing it, I just wanted to play the advocate there and just see what the numbers brought us.
Right, right.
And, and the deck was built without a permit. And the only permit granted after the fact was just for that front portion. There's no real evidence or proof of if the rear existed or if it was built, so.
If I may, I attached to my
Hey, Ryan, come on up, come on up, Brian.
Ryan.
Brian, if you want to come on up and speak.
And in a way, I think we need to be in the here and now. This is the, this is what we're looking at today. We're looking at an application to add a second floor to a single-family house in a pre-existing non-conforming area of our town.
Yes.
And the bad feelings between the neighbor and the applicant clearly stated, there's a long history of situations and
Right.
and things. I don't think it's, I know it's not in our purview in this board to go there's nothing we can do to fix what's already been done.
Right.
It's not, it's not our, it's not our it's not under our
Our purview.
Our purview, it's not our
Well, what's under your purview is to enforce the zoning bylaws. And the zoning bylaws state that any structure that was put in that violated zoning less than ten years can't be considered when applying for a pre-existing non-conforming. That's, 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 that's the law.
And how do we know when that deck, we don't know when it was built, but when it wasn't built anyway? When, do we have, do we have a picture or something, like from a dated time?
Yes, I believe in my earlier packet, we, we showed a picture, I'm not sure. Mr. Ryan can certainly testify as to when it was done, but we, it was done when the previous owner put it up for sale because the, the side steps that he had weren't, weren't big enough. And that's when those decks were expanded.
Understood. Yeah, I remember, you can see just the edge of that picture of it, yeah. But what year was that, do you know? Could you, do you know?
Page fifteen, Nicole.
Ryan, Ryan, excuse me, if you're gonna talk, you need to come up to the mic.
There was three different hearings back then for Mr. DeVito between zoning and, or conservation, I believe it was zoning, but then there, there's certainly on file records, there's, there's notes on them from the
Right, that's all I wanna know, is, is that the
I could probably give you dates on those three hearings, if you would like. And then you can see the notes on those.
I unfortunately didn't bring those conservation minutes with me. But if my memory serves me correct, it was about twenty sixteen. The two sixteen, conservation issue went before.
I think that's correct.
For a general time period, it was sixteen, seventeen.
That is correct, I believe that building permit for the deck was September of sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
So if I, if I may
Yeah, that's the picture I remember here.
So I took the liberty, if you, if you, if I will, I attached a, it's page fifteen of my PDF showing a old listing document of this house. It's not the greatest picture in the world, I hope it's in color on your scan.
You know what number it is?
Page fifteen, she's coming right up to it.
Anybody getting dizzy yet?
Attachment C, yeah. So if we go to page fifteen, you'll have a series of six pictures. And the bottom left-hand picture is one of the best ones, where you can actually see the rear deck out of the sliders. So the very bottom picture, Nicole, you can see the existence of that rear deck there.
Oh, the, the rail?
The rhythm, yeah.
And when is this?
This is a listing document from Ask Me the Tough Questions. It's more than ten years ago.
This is from nine twenty-three of twenty-eleven.
Yeah, twenty-eleven.
Okay, off-market date, yeah, yeah, twenty-eleven, listing date twenty-eleven.
So that top picture, are they taken in two different times?
Does not show the large deck off the front. So it's not there, but it's a building permit that's issues later. And in fact, I represented that the building permit didn't exist, actually, what I represented was my And in fact, I represented that the building permit didn't exist. Actually, what I represented was my client told me that the building permit wasn't there. And I believe the gentleman called for the file, and we found an orange building permit for the deck. And I believe that that is permit number... It had a permit number, and I didn't, um, I didn't take a copy of it, so I didn't attach it. But the number was in a footnote.
Just, just so I'm understanding here.
We have a permit for the, you're talking the front deck.
We have a permit for the front deck.
On the side or on the front of the, whoa.
That's the, that's the rear of the door.
Face in the water?
No, face in the...
Oh, okay, all right. Face in the woods.
Property line.
From the front door, basement door on the other side of the wall.
Right, right, face in the woods, right, gotcha.
So while we were discussing this, what I did was I understand the architectural rendering to have two decks. One deck is that rear deck, and the other deck is the front deck. And to their point, the front deck goes directly across and includes an area of the rear deck. And the easiest way to show you is actually on the architectural rendering. That is going to be, I'm sorry the page numbers weren't good on, on this, but it's gonna be after sixteen. So it's gonna be one, two, three... Three or four pages after sixteen. It's gonna be sheet item, sheet four. Right underneath this mass architects, it says sheet four. So when I carved that area out, what I did was I, I took this dimension, the architect tells us that the width of this deck is twelve feet and six inches. And if I just run that along the, the length of the house, wait a minute. There with me. Could you go back a couple of pages? Because I don't wanna look at the proposed, the old proposed structure. I think that'll create a lot of confusion. And then it, right there. The architect is telling us that that deck is twelve feet, six inches. And if I look at the width of the building as twenty-four feet and three inches, I did that calculation. That area within the footprint, the, the permissive zoning footprint would be three hundred and three square feet. So instead of the four hundred and five point two one square foot for unenclosed structure, deck number one, on my calculation on page nine, I could replace that number with three oh three point one two. And that would just be the mathematical calculation excluding that area that my brother is objecting to. And then we could run a number on that, and I might beg the indulgence to include the mechanical room. And I, I think it's six and one half dozen the other, 'cause the mechanical room is eighty-three square feet. So it's about a hundred feet there and then eighty-three feet, eighty-three square feet on the, on the alternative. And then, and I could just run that whole number for us and do the fifty percent calculation.
Okay.
I could do that right now. And I would dispute the, the assertion, in the meantime, that the deck violates zoning. The front deck was permitted, and it was evaluated not to infringe on the setback because of the existence of the pre-existing rear deck that's been there for over ten years. I think that was, be a fair interpretation of what happened in the building.
Rear deck is on the west side of the house? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yep, it's on the west side, yep, of the house.
And then the other deck that we're recalculating is on the lake side of the house?
It's on the lake side of the house.
So you're contending that the west side towards the woods on the western side was done without a permit? That long skinny one? There was a stairway over there, and then that the deck was done without a permit, that deck?
Correct, or it was done when the house was constructed. I, you know, it's, it's the rear entrance to exit of the house.
I believe what we're saying is, I, I look at the house, where, where the, where the front door is, is the front of the house. Then you have the lake side of the house, which sits to the left. You have the back of the house.
Okay.
The back deck was extended when the lake, the left side of the house deck was put on
Okay.
in 2016.
Yes.
I feel like I just wanna offer you guys some clarity on that, just to help you. You guys look confused. So that house, when it was originally built, there was what I call the rear deck, not the lakeside, okay? Or the west side, as you referred to it. When that house, even before the last two owners, there was an existing deck there.
Okay.
Okay? And it served as a rear egress for the property, okay? There was, where a little kitchen window is now, was originally as-built, when this house was as-built. There was a door, and it served as an egress to that rear deck.
Okay.
And just a little stairs, okay? The previous homeowner, Mr. DeVito... This is my opinion of this. I'm not, I don't like throwing stones, but this is what it appears.
Don't give it, just tell us what happened with the construction of the deck.
This is what appears happened to me. He started constructing the deck, okay? He went in and said it was an existing deck. He was referring to the one I just told you about.
Okay.
But he built one on the lakeside, two entirely different things.
Gotcha.
So there lies some confusion, okay? So that deck ended up getting permitted, perhaps under the guise that it was, was there before, when it never was. It was really the rear deck. And then he came back and built the rear deck after.
So we also have some case law. Thank you for clarifying, and I know we talked, I talked about this in my own head when I saw the plans and I heard this explanation previously. If you have a pre-existing non-conforming deck, small deck off the backside, with or without a variance, you can extend that deck without another variance, without a variance.
Lengthwise.
Lengthwise.
I'm drawing in my, okay, you have the, you have the house.
Right.
You have the back deck, a short piece that did not go up and extend. That deck already was too close to the side setback. Like you said, it's not fifty feet away from the side setback. It was there.
Correct.
It's been there, it, it was there for more than ten years. As long as that deck does not go out closer to the...
But it did. Correct?
Yes.
It went out front on the same line.
No, he's saying it went out...
He did both.
Further, right.
So the back deck extended even further into the non-conformity. It extended further
But even going lengthwise, still, still, still adds more to it over the non-conformity in both directions, depending on which, if you're calling it the lake.
So what I think he's saying is something like this. They had like a little stair here, and that they came out this way and this way, or whatever way.
Right.
But they went further towards non-conformity and down the length. That's what I'm understanding from what you're saying. Is that if it was a four-foot little square deck, it became a six-foot by eight-foot or something like, right? So that's what I think he's saying.
Okay.
I don't know how we do anything, 'cause that's definitely been there for more than ten years.
Right.
You know, right?
I think there's photo evidence that you could come to that conclusion logically.
Yeah. So I don't know that we can touch that, you know, I don't know how we, how we prove one thing one way or the other.
Exactly, exactly. So that being said, there is a deck there now, whether it was expanded in the non-conformity or
Right.
not. We don't have any evidence one way or the other, so.
I think, I think you do. First of all, you have the testimony of someone who, who was there when it was done.
But you don't have to credit that testimony. They don't have to.
No, they don't.
And their discretion will not be overturned.
Oh, I, well, I guess we'll find out.
It's, I would say this, that yes, we have the, the statement by you that that, that is the case. You obviously have interest in this, so it's not a non-biased statement, I would say. And, and I can't verify it one way or the other. That's all I'm saying, is that, and I'm not saying you're right or wrong, I'm just saying I don't know. And how can I know, you know?
Well, there's photo evidence of it. I'm pretty sure I can show it to you right now if you want to go there.
Actually, I think it's all moot anyways, so.
Actually, I, and I don't know, I'll pull onto your memory, and here's my memory. We went, it seems to be a couple of years ago, might even been sooner than that. And we looked, and we saw the rear of that property. There was a lot of things piled up there. There was an old shed off to the side. It really wasn't very well-kempt. Excuse me, Cindy, I know you're listening. With all of that being said, there was what appeared to me to be a very older deck on that side compared to the other deck. So I don't know what was changed, when it was changed, when that deck was built. I have a photograph showing that railing existed ten years ago. And I have a building permit issued by the, the then building, or the current building commissioner, either or, issuing a permit for a deck matching a line, what appears to be the same line. And I think that that is fairly credible and persuasive, persuasive evidence. I took out the hundred, um, square feet, if you will. So I left in that deck that's in the rear, because I knew it has, I know it's existed there in some form or another for ten years. I took out that corner of that front deck, because that was extended over. So I'm gonna try to mimic what you drew in, in the air. The deck in the rear is in the back.
So going on his picture.
Can I approach you, 'cause I...
I'm not an artist.
This is...
It's a rough rendering.
If he had a permit to do this and added this, that would be still allowed because it's within that footprint. That is how I understand the
As long as it doesn't go beyond this and beyond this.
As long as it doesn't go beyond this and what was here there.
That's my understanding.
Here there.
Right, and, and I don't disagree with that.
I need talking lessons.
I would say that what his point is, is that the deck was, the deck was this.
Is bigger and...
Was, was this. And that's what he's saying is that, but...
However, we did see through the window in 2011, something that may contradict that on the property card, on the real estate listing.
Is there?
So what I was saying is...
Is there the original drawing of the house?
Already.
Nicole?
And even if it was...
No, there's nothing.
Even if it was this, you can do that.
Instead of getting out of the weeds, of going further and further into them.
So I'm trying, let's see if I can back us out of them. So, um, if I remove that area, the contested area, I come up to twenty-three hundred and fifty-six point one five square feet. I take twenty-three hundred and fifty-six point one five, and I add back in, uh, in, if you to exercise your discretion to include the mechanical room, eighty-three point seven five. Uh, I come back to twenty-four hundred and thirty-nine square feet, representing a difference of what I said before, which was twenty-four fifty-eight. So if I minus twenty-four fifty-eight...
Can you zoom into that picture with the pink curtains?
I don't think I can.
Click on the picture.
Looks like something's out there, huh?
If we add the mechanical room...
That's the alleged, not the alleged, that's the, that's, I'm sounding like you guys. That's the
That looks like the top...
So-called kitchen door that went out to the so-called deck out on the backside.
What is this pic, what's the bottom, bottom left picture in reference to the bottom right picture?
At one point, the front of the house was enclosed.
That's this, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So this is the front porch that we're looking at, Ryan?
And then is, is that pink curtain room right on the other side of this wall here?
That, so that's the door, that's the original door that is now a window that would access the rear deck that I described.
Right there.
That was like the back door, right.
But, but where is that?
So go in that sliding door and go down the, the line.
Right, so that's right there. That, that leads to that.
Yes.
Okay. But it's clearly out that slider, and it's clearly in that window.
Mm-hmm.
And what's that distance?
Picture on the left is outside and has been enclosed, and then another deck has been built in front of that after. And the picture on the right is the inside of the dwelling, which shows the door that went to the little deck and stairway that used to serve as a rear, rear egress.
So if this, this is the screen, this is the slider that's, was an old deck that got, that got enclosed apparently? So that would tell me that this rear deck came up along the backside of the house.
You can see it through there, as you pointed out before in another hearing, and it flushes out with the front of the house.
It flushes out with the front of the house.
See it through there, as you said.
So if I remove the contested area
That's what you said.
of the, of the one hundred square feet from the deck enclosed, uh, the unenclosed, so if we go back, if I may ask, Nicole, can you bring us back to page nine of my letter? Thank you so much for having this. This is great. I think that's it right there. And if we scroll up, and if I, if I take out unenclosed deck structure of four hundred and five, and I replace that with a three hundred and three, I come up with a total square footage of twenty-three fifty-six. And if I add back in the eighty-three square feet for the mechanical room, I come to a total of twenty-four thirty-nine square feet, a difference of about eighteen or nineteen square feet. So if we were to concede this point, then I would be at twenty-three, twenty-four thirty-nine. If I divided that by two, I'm still at, uh, a fifty percent of that would still be twelve hundred nineteen point five square feet. And I'd still be one, one square foot underneath that fifty percent calculation. So if those, if that's what you would like to do, and I don't have my client here to authorize me to take off square footage of the deck, but if I go from ten to eight, that's eight times, that's two times twenty-four, two times twenty-four. That would be forty-eight square feet. So I mean, we're all right in this, um, debate.
The new deck, the new deck? Taking two feet off the new deck?
If I was able to do that, I'm not, I just don't have the
Right, right.
authority to offer that, 'cause I just, my, my client had some surgery, and she's still somewhat having some problems there, so.
All right.
But I would just...
So we've heard your, your counterproposal or your, your, your contention in regards to the calculation of the decks and the square footage. Let's move on to, I think we have enough information. I mean, we...
We're squabbling over percentages, like points.
And we're, we're talking about, I mean, this is the third time this year we've heard it, and we heard it previously several times. So I mean, we're, we're well-versed in the both sides of the story.
Okay.
Let's move on to, is this project more detrimental to the neighborhood? And is it within the purview of the zoning, the essence of the zoning law? That's not the right word, but essence is a nice word.
So my argument obviously is it's not more detrimental. We actually argue that it will be an improvement to the neighborhood. The primary concern about this neighborhood is the, obviously, the quality of water in the lake. Uh, this project already has begun to improve that. We've, um, um, there's been some drone footage. It was uploaded, but we've already began to grade the new driveway along the property line. But we're taking all of the, um, all the packed surfaces and moving them away from the lake, which is gonna give water a little bit better chance, not maybe the greatest chance, to get recharged into the ground and percolate to the ground before it enters the lake. Doing an improvement in the property would allow an opportunity. My client's budget has changed quite a bit since this project started. But she'll look for opportunities to use dry wells to help recharge groundwater and, um, protect, um, the best of her ability, uh, the runoff from her property to the lake. Uh, we've looked at the abutters property. The, I, I would not credit my brother's argument that the purpose of the overlay district would require a denial of any zoning relief requested, um, because it may or may not impact an abutter. And then I would just go on further to say that this really doesn't impact the abutter. Um, I provided some Google Earth, and I provided some annotations on the Google Earth photos. Those are exhibits, um, G and H.
Can you go back to those drawn things for a second? And the second one?
That's where the new driveway, I think, is going in there.
Okay.
And that's consistent with Mr. Green's, uh, plan, uh, restoration plan.
And there will be trees planted per the plan?
There will have to be new trees planted, yes. There will be plantings. My, my client did install a cedar fence there for privacy and safety concerns. My client did install a cedar fence there for privacy and safety concerns. The, so that, if I look at my exhibit G, and if I could just try to help with the page number on that, I don't know. It's gonna be page number thirty-seven. Not the greatest photo, and I also have one on thirty-eight. What I tried to depict is the line of sight of the gentleman's view. I tried to pick the most obscure part of his building, which is his corner front deck. And as you can see from the depictions, although it's not an elevation, the view is already obstructed from simply the single, the single-story structure. But you can see the lake from his front deck, and you can see the roadway and the roadway, and in fact, his primary view from other photos that I've looked at is really across the roadway and into the lake on the other side of Island Road. So these exhibits, G and H and the annotations, I tried to estimate the corner of the house, it was difficult to see through the trees. The other thing, I think that this photo is excellent at depicting, I'm sorry, if we can flip to, making sure we're looking at the twenty-nineteen photo.
This is twenty-nineteen.
Which is the upper right-hand corner, it's gonna be page thirty-seven. Just the amount of vegetation in the rear of that property, you can kind of see has been substantially reduced because of the cutting of those trees already. Already improving the Abutters' air and light, which is one of their objections that they're gonna make for you. So, in essence, there's been an improvement on air and light already. The next photo that I'm providing the board is on page forty-one, it's just a drone photo, it was one of the listing photos. It's not, doesn't have the correct line of sight, but it just gives you an idea about how historically anyways, the tree line, we're just gonna go to page forty-one, I think, which would be, it's this drone photo.
So.
Yeah, attachment I, the next one. Thank you so much. We can just see, you can see the tree line there, the existing trees preventing obstructions to any air or light that was previously existing.
That was, what year?
What improved my air and light there, I don't understand your argument. I see all my trees that were cut down and twenty feet of riprap put over under my property, improving the view of this nice new deck that greatly improved that property for the, that's what I see.
The next photograph I have is, is more into the line of sight with, after the trees have been removed, and it's a photo taken from the lake of the, of the area of the, as we can see, the single-family, the single-story house, as we move across the area, and if we flip through these photos, is, is truly, and the shed and the trees, really would block any view from the gentleman's home already more than, as much as adding nine foot on top of the building. There isn't a view from the gentleman's home over my client's house that has any material impact. Going up nine feet.
That's kind of subjective, I think.
Well, I haven't seen a photo of one.
Go stand on the property, we all did a, we all did a site visit. The site visit clearly showed what the raising of that house is going to do and how it's going to block his, the sunlight to Mr. McCauley's house.
He blocked my view by putting up a fence.
Going up nine feet.
Is gonna block.
Quiet, quiet.
It's gonna, going up nine feet.
I just wanna finish my thoughts.
Is going to block his view nine more feet.
Going up nine feet, thirty feet from the property line, isn't even gonna cast a shadow on his property. So that's just simply not accurate.
We dispute that, and we rely on the site visit that was done by this board that clearly showed.
When was that?
During your first initial attempt to, to do this.
I've also attached for your consideration documentation of the gentleman's listing, I know this is something that we looked at last time, but I had a new thought on this and I just wanted to express that to you. Thank you, Nicole, if we can just flip into the next page, and we're gonna be looking again at the photos on the, so, as any realtor would do, they're gonna give you the very best photos, and these are the best views that we have from the gentleman's house. The one on the bottom left is clearly to the rear of my client's house. You can somewhat see that deck protruding on the very left-hand side of the photograph, that's the view. Building up nine feet will have zero impact on that view. The other photo that shows the view is the, is the view from his actual land, because he has a large L-shaped lot that will bring him right down to the lake, and that, that's a photo of that view. There is no view from the, taken from the deck or from the house, which if you were to market this property and if there was something worth showing, certainly you would have shown it. In fact, that's what they did in my client's listing, I'm just, I'm not a realtor, but that's what they're telling us, that's what we see. And that, that's, those are the photos, if we flip over to fifty-eight.
Could we just go back to the photo of the front of the yellow house, superimposed in front of the, hold on, we're close. Nope, one more. Right there, nope, straight on, hold on, one more back maybe? That's not the one I'm thinking about, no, sorry.
Who put that one upside down?
There was one that was more like looking at the front of the house.
Yeah, I, I think what, I think you're looking for, I think it's down further. I think it's three or four down. I.
I'm talking about.
That one is the one.
That one right there, that's the one I was talking about.
So the photograph.
The original, the original plan that we saw two, three years ago, whatever, the walls were going up straight and the roofs were, the roofs were massive, and it would clearly be taller than Mr. McCauley's house. If I understand this proposal accurately, that's what it looks like, that would clearly block everything because it's now two and a half stories taller.
That's the hundred and fifty percent increase, correct, okay.
Versus that.
Yeah.
Now, from the middle of the, that upright, towards the peak of the roof, my understanding that's six feet.
Yes, from.
From top to bottom.
Yep.
You're gonna take from bottom of the deck, from bottom of that to that roof opening.
Yeah, at six feet.
That's nine plus six is fifteen. We're only going up another nine feet in, in the middle.
Yes.
But the walls on the edge are only gonna go, in my mind.
Is the pitch changing?
The pitch is staying the same, so. You've got a nine-foot wall, the nine-foot wall is not gonna impact the view out of his skylight at all. The previous one might, maybe that's got, skylight on the right, but.
There's two skylights.
Right, the one on the left is not gonna be impacted. The one on the right will be hidden from view, but it is more than thirty feet, thirty-five, forty feet away from the structure at least. And it's on a sloping hill.
So last time we were here, we talked about maybe getting some pictures from your windows, did that happen, do we have that?
From my windows?
No, 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 from the. Just so we can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at, because it really is a lot of just guesswork.
There is some photos from the windows in the listing as well.
And you can't look out those skylights, right, you can't look out those skylights to see the water. Right, it's, it's just, it's up in the air, right?
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was like a finished floor, you know, that you could walk on up there, like a loft or something.
Sure, please.
Yeah, yeah, let's, one, come up front, you can just skim right by all of us, or come around.
That window in the living room, like the best one.
To the right of the door, or to the left?
So my one skylight, so this would be this window's closest to the street.
Right, so to the right, the right of that door on the side there.
I have two windows on that side.
Yeah.
This would be the one that's closest to the street.
Gotcha.
Can I see that, please?
Yes.
So as it's current, you can't see the water there. You don't have one from the other window, do you?
So, okay, thank you. So what I'm noticing is, if we add nine feet, just in the guesstimate, that's still not gonna be as tall as the tallest plane trees in that picture.
Oh, it's gonna skyrocket over the trees.
Those trees look substantially more than thirty-five, than nine feet.
The ones across the lake and.
No, the ones in that picture by the roof. If you look at that, if you look at that. So nine feet.
The trees on her property and my property are sixty feet tall.
Right, that's what I'm just saying, that's exactly my point. I'm talking about.
Talking about my view tree line.
I'm talking about solar and access and all that stuff, that the house is going to be.
So, right, if that goes up, it's gonna block what's beyond that.
The sun comes up here, okay, and comes over this way, she goes up, she's gonna put me in darkness and ruin these solar panels on that side of the roof where my sun lights are.
Thank you.
Especially in the low sun in the winter where we are now, like I saw, like that sun barely makes it over the tree line in the morning hours. It would, in the morning hours, it would.
And looking at this picture right here, it looks like it's afternoon sun. The entire backyard is shaded already without the, without the.
You don't know if it's a blue sky day or.
Well, there's sun on the left by the clock.
Oh, yeah, there is some shadows over there.
And see the sunlight on the left?
Well, it could be clouds though too, so I mean.
And the order is to restore trees.
Taller than the house?
Yes, whatever the restoration order specifically is, and.
Which I'm gonna argue is gonna, because that wasn't necessarily what was there blocking.
Well.
Blocking my.
Do you have the Google?
I do have the mass map for photos, yeah, I'm gonna pull those up right now.
I thought I had, and I must not have brought them with me.
So this is two thousand and thirteen, here's Ryan's house, and here's Cindy's house.
And you can see sunlight with all those trees clearly hitting my roof right there in that photo.
So if the trees are sixty feet tall.
And then here is two thousand and nineteen. Here's Ryan's house, here's Cindy's house.
Right, and that one tree corner of the house there, I had two, I removed two oaks that were shading my roof in preparation to get solar panels, and I've been kind of in limbo of not knowing what's going on next door, so that whole project's been on hold.
I'm gonna just read it, and it's a fact that I think is, is very important, that the, the structure, this structure could be built ten feet from this property line. This structure is thirty feet from the property line and is only gonna go up nine feet, of which the peak is really the tallest part. So I, I.
When was this picture?
Two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, it didn't say the month.
Oh.
We, we just.
Summer.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Summer, green leaves, in water.
Do you wanna hear my dispute about the whole height issue now, or do you want?
Sure.
When ready, okay. So, my brother said during his presentation that the median level of the ground or the grade plane isn't relevant. But it is, because that's how you need to determine whether or not it's currently a one-story or two-story house. The grade plane determines whether or not that quote-unquote basement where the front door is, is the first story of that house. And you can't make that determination until you have made the determination of what the grade plane is. So, our contention is, is that could very well be a story. The first story of that house is where that front door is.
Our assessors and our building inspector have labeled that part of the building as a basement.
Okay, they can't do that unless they have determined what the grade plane is. Under seven-eighty CMR, five, five-zero-two point one, a basement shall be considered as a story above grade plane where the finished surface of the floor above the basement is more than six feet above the grade plane. So you can't make that determination until you've determined what the grade plane is. And nowhere has that been submitted.
I understand that that door is going away in the new rendition of the property, and the, the lot will be leveled so that the entire part of the basement will be subgrade.
Yes.
But the grade plane now determines whether or not that is a pre-existing one- or two-story house.
The assessor's card is pretty clear about that topic, I have a first floor, I have a basement.
Again.
And the basement is the subarea identified BMT subarea, one hundred percent RPM, whatever that means, usable.
You had the, the septic plans?
The septic?
Septic plans for the house.
Not with me, sir, the sep, I don't have them with me. Done by Norstar?
The septic plans would lay out the elevation and where the septic tank is and where it comes out, what the elevations are, any permeability, anything like that would be on your septic plans.
If I can draw your attention to, I think it's my exhibit B, which is on page twelve, and I'd welcome anyone to have my magnifying glass. Mr. Green has laid out all of the different elevations of the property.
Those, those elevations aren't relevant because a grade plane has a specific definition under the statute. And you, and, again.
Wait, wait a minute, what statute are you referring to?
Seven-eighty CMR.
That doesn't apply to zoning. That doesn't apply to zoning.
It, it applies to what, whether or not a basement is a story. It certainly does apply to zoning.
Doesn't apply to zoning.
So.
It applies to zoning as to whether or not the definition of a basement counts as a story on a structure, it certainly does.
Then I would say that it should also apply to the assessors, and, you know what I mean, across the board, and they're.
My brother is fully aware that we, we do not rely on assessors in any kind of legal determination as far as property lines, as far as stories.
Perhaps in your purview, there are experts when we're, there are experts for information when we're dealing with town, town information, they're certified and licensed in the, in the town which they do their surveys and everything, and they're not asking for a variance on the story, they're not. they're not asking for a variance on the story, they're not asking for.
I, I think that's the point.
See your regulation.
But.
But that's the point.
Then I'm confused.
If this is, if, if the structure as it sits in the ground now is two stories.
Yes.
Then the height isn't from where they're saying it is, it's from the bottom of that door.
There's no grade plane definition that would suffice to say it's the bottom of the door.
The grade plane definition is right, I just gave it to you. I, I don't know where it is. I, I don't know what the grade plan of this property is, I don't know.
The plan is to level that.
Yes.
Across, fill in that entire sunken part.
In fact, in fact, this.
And put a bulkhead or something of the sort.
There'll be, there'll either be some type of, yeah, entrance at that point, like a bulkhead, but there won't be a front door like this.
The front door will be lakeside.
Yes, and I, and if I would just suggest, just like the height issue was a red herring, this is a red herring, to confuse the board, this is just like any other single-family, single-story structure, except for there's a divot, a man-made divot to make this front entrance, basement entrance.
That is, that is not factually correct.
That is absolutely one.
That door, that door was not dug out when that house was built.
Look, looking at.
That door was to grade because it came down the hill. They didn't rappel down into their front door.
I, I beg to differ to both of you, all of you, because when that house was built in the nineteen sixties, that was not a finished basement, that was a house on stilts, and they added the basement and the door to be in compliance at that point, so it was a cottage.
Correct.
It was a cottage.
But when they put, but when they put that basement quote-unquote in, they didn't do it so they had to rappel down to, in order to get through the front door.
Illegally dug out.
It, it wasn't dug out, it was done.
No, that ravine goes through the whole house, I mean, was there a little bit of escuadge? It was a driveway, is what it was, that was the pre-existing curve-cut driveway. In my opinion, and it probably was once, so I would agree.
In nineteen sixty, it looked very different.
It was a camp.
It was a camp.
Mary Haskins lived there.
And can we, can we talk about red herrings now that my brother brought it up?
Okay, sure.
Okay.
One more red herring.
The red herring is, which I think makes all of this moot, is what they're asking for is a two-family home. They have always asked for a two-family home. Look at the plans. First floor, kitchen, dining room, living room, bathroom, future laundry, gym, office. Second floor, kitchen, oh, gee, there's one on the first floor, too, dining room, gee, there's one on the first floor, too. Family room, which is a living room by another name. Bathroom times two, and two bedrooms. This is a two-family house, it always has been a two-family house. If you allow this, you are setting a precedence so that every person who comes to you now is going to have a yoga room, a studio, a library, an office, to get around your zoning. This has always been a two-family house. It's not allowed. I, I don't even know how this got this far, quite frankly. Someone explain to me how this isn't a two-family house.
He would be the gentleman to do that, I think.
Okay.
I, I don't know where he's getting that from.
Where am I getting that from? It's in your plans.
Those were the old plans.
These are the plans he put in his thesis that he just sent to us.
Yes, Mr. Postery, you do have the old house plans in your packet. I'm pulling up right now the house plans that were submitted at last meeting.
The old house plans are there for the architectural renderings of the current property.
Okay, look, I can only go by what is before the board and what we were told. These were the plans that were for this hearing today.
Yeah.
If these aren't the plans that we're talking about, I'm going to ask that this meeting get continued because I want to see the plans that we're talking about.
The plans that we're talking about are attached to the application for the building permit.
Which are the plans that you're looking at?
This is a delay.
This is a delay.
There's no question.
So, that's the first floor as it exists, is that true?
This is, this is the proposed first floor. No, this is existing, existing first floor, and then.
That's the second floor.
Proposed second floor.
Can I step up to that because I can't see?
This is the revised.
Right.
Second floor.
Proposed second floor fall of twenty-two, which is. No kitchen space. New second floor balcony.
I noticed this, her deck is six feet there. I don't know why I'm being told it was ten, the, the second floor rendering.
That's the first floor still.
Right, six.
What, what we were, what we were assuming it was? I, I, I don't even, I don't even have those plans.
This was in the last packet.
The, the only plans I had from the packet that I have are, are these drawings.
This was submitted in with the building permit application uploaded to the website, so Vinnie would not have provided them to you.
No one provided them to me.
They're in the zoning packet from December of twen-.
But if I didn't know that they were submitted, why would I look?
This was presented at last meeting.
There's no kitchen.
Yes, this was presented by.
There's, there's a one bedroom, a bathroom, a closet, and a living space with a deck.
Well, I, I've made my request that this, this be continued so that I can look at those plans and discuss with my client. Because the packet we got last week, this, this, nowhere in here does it say that these are, these aren't the plans we're supposed to rely on and that he was only providing them for architectural.
Of the current structure.
That was the orig- that was the comparison of the old plans versus the new plans. We, when we came in in December for the first meeting, we were told that it was a majorly scaled back version of the first plans, and we.
That's.
Looked at them in December.
There is no way to be confused by the architectural rendering from March of a previous year showing this enormous structure to what we're just putting on nine stor- a nine-story second floor and a, and a very small deck.
And to your point, they, about the septic?
I believe that was one of your concerns.
I'm just guessing, but since it's a two-bedroom house still, they're not going to add, and no more kitchen, they probably don't have to.
They have to do all the elevation.
But they probably don't have to expand the septic to the degree that they would have had it been that four-bedroom, double kitchen.
Yes, absolutely.
So, it's a moderate, mo- moderate, modified septic plan as well.
Sure, yeah, agreed.
So, just for the record, for Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Six Island Road ZBA packet is uploaded to the website, and it is what was presented at the last meeting. And the plans that were submitted in this packet were that of the old house. We wanted, we wanted more measurements, yes. That's, we all went away with different jobs to do, different information to find out. But here are the plans, if you're looking for them.
What's that?
Here are the plans if you're looking for them.
Oh, I see them now. Because I remember bringing up that the permit didn't have even the right square footage on it.
Correct, that's what paused, and we had to go back and re-measure.
Correct.
Okay, now question.
And we get, we got the correct measurements.
We got the correct measurements, what's on the assessor's card is in fact correct of the eleven thirty-two. The height can be no taller than thirty-five feet. It does not include the chimney per section seven point two point four under special conditions, letter A.
And it's not, as we see, a two-family home.
It is no longer, has two of everything, correct?
No longer has kitchens.
And also the deck's been scaled back to six feet versus ten feet, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, that's what that drawing depicts.
Yep.
And then the detrimental aspect of it, I think, is the last point we need to decide on, unless there's some other point.
And you're sure about the six feet?
That's what her drawing depicts. I, I'm here, I'm here with ten feet in my letter because that's what I was told. I see the drawing depicts it, and I just saw that when we were showing it on the screen, so. If we go with the six.
That's a, that's a, that's a discrepancy in yours, and just so, in understanding that should we make a decision?
It's a contingency.
We would, we would make it.
Per the plan of.
Per the plan.
Right.
The plans that you have submitted to you. That's fair.
I would, I would still suggest that the height is dependent upon what the, what the median grade is, and we don't know that.
Massachusetts general law says that that house is a two-and-a-half story house as it sits right now, pre-existing non-conforming house.
If I may, is this something that Mr. McCartney can hash out for us?
It's not impossible to have him, but when I do the calculations, we could have him, but there is no mean height, there's no mean elevation on this property that will cause this structure to be thirty-five feet tall with, when you add nine feet to it. So, I'm, I'm happy to go back to McCarty Engineering, you know, my client's been spending a lot of money on engineering.
So.
But if we, if we, if, if we say that we have to measure the height of this building from the surface of the lake, where it sits here, and we go up after we add nine feet, it is going to be thirty-two feet tall, so if the mean, the average height of the land is the lake, I'm still under thirty-five feet, so it's, it's not relevant in the.
It is relevant, that's not the issue, the height itself is not the issue. The issue is whether this structure is a two-story house as it sits or a one-story house as it sits.
That's not the issue, even your own building commissioner does not say that that's an issue. He sent it here because of the fifty percent concern.
What I would say is that, what you're, what I, what I'm getting is that you want for him to go through the motions of getting permission to make, to raise that grade? Because if he gets permission to raise that grade and, and to close off that bottom door, then we just come back and we, we do this again, except now it's considered a one-story building by all intents and purposes.
We don't, we don't want him to raise the grade.
According to the, according to the assessors and the building inspector, they call that a walkout basement and a first floor.
Correct, and there is a statute that defines whether walkout basements, depending upon what the median grade is, is a first floor. But no one has addressed that.
The definition itself for, and I said this at the last meeting, okay, the definition itself, and under Mass General Law for whether it's a basement or a cellar is irrelevant. Everyone keeps calling it a basement, but under my interpretation of the definitions of Mass General Law, it's a cellar, okay, so if we're going to call it what it is, it's a cellar, it's a walkout cellar, and also the first word in that definition says a story, when it says the definition under Mass General Law for what a cellar is, says a story. The first two words, the first two words of basement also say a story. But if you wanted to, it's technically a walkout cellar, but it is a two-and-a-half story, pre-existing, non-conforming building.
I don't see, I don't see where you get the two-and-a-half story.
Because the roof is a half a story, it's two and a half, it's two and a half. Okay, under, yeah, that's my interpretation, it's two-and-a-half stories already, and it starts from, the height starts from the bottom of the, the front door of the street. And I know a lot, I built swimming pools, I know a lot of construction people, and I'm pretty versionless, and I'm ninety-nine point nine percent confident that I am not wrong on any of this.
At the end of the day, there's a definition that tells us.
The definitions are there, exactly.
Whether or not.
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, if he goes through the motions of getting that filled in, that, that door closed off.
Massachusetts general law tells you how to do that in this situation, how to determine where the mean elevation is.
What I'm saying.
And if you follow the law, it tells you that it's the base of that front door.
What I'm saying is, if, if separate from us, that happens, and he does that, and, and he raises that grade to be above where that door is, then that house would be considered a one-story, right?
No, it wouldn't, no.
So, so it would always be considered a two-story?
You can't alter what it is just by filling it in.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but, but he can build, like, say they tore down the house and built the exact same house without that doorway there, what would it be considered then? One-story or two-story?
It depends what the, the median grade is. Yet, that, yet, that's what triggers everything, is the median grade. And what's getting lost here is, that house was put that way for a specific reason. It was done knowing that Mr., my client's house wasn't behind it. That's why they built the house the way they did.
And mine was built first, and they were built in harmony together, and they coexist.
Part of a common scheme.
And this is going to change the way my land functions too, just not everything else, you know? The way my house functions, the way it expands and contracts.
That should be a primary consideration right there.
It is.
It is.
You're, you're reducing the quality of the neighborhood with this size structure, this is my opinion. I think that it's overkill, I think it's a beautiful piece of property, I think it's a beautiful building, but I think that it, the intent of the zoning by law in the overlay district map clearly states that it should stay within the integrity of the neighborhood. That's my take on this, and that's where I'm going to go with it, just so everybody knows, knows right up front. It's something it gives, gives thought to. You know, we're, we're arguing about square footage and basements and this, that, and the other thing, and I understand the logic to this because you're trying to create a situation that's going to be conducive to your client, but in the process of that, we have to take into consideration that we don't negate from what this gentleman over here has and the quality of life that he's entitled to.
Sure.
That's all I'm saying.
So, but, but to that point, and, and that's the, the quality of life that he had before this project began was there were trees blocking the entire back line of that property. Those are already gone, it did, that in and of itself is already an improvement to that. And if there wasn't, if there wasn't a safety and a privacy concern, there wouldn't even be a fence there. And the, the quality of his life is also going to be improved to the entire neighborhood, especially by getting the impervious surface away from the lake, because it's what's happening, if we go up and we look at it, the driveway is right by the Island Road, which is right by the Causeway Bridge, and there's a, a constant runoff just flowing off the property. All of that driveway is going to be gone, all of this restoration work's going to be done, we're going to capture water and we're going to recharge it. And the building up nine feet, thirty feet away from the property line, is really going to have no impact. What they, the problem is, is you're in the middle of a neighbor's dispute, and I think that they're using this board as an effort to continue that fight. And I beg you not to, not to allow the board to be used in that way.
I don't think that's the case at all.
When you, if, if, if we talk about mean, mean height, if we take, mean is the average height on the property, that's what it is. If you do the absolute lowest point, which is the top of the lake, the structure is thirty-two feet tall. If you use the absolute highest point, if, I'm sorry, if you use the bottom of the basement door, which is what he suggested.
Sir, I, I know exactly what you're saying, but that's not what he's disputing.
That's not what we're disputing at all.
He's not disputing the height at all, he's just disputing how it's being categorized.
And now he, yeah, so then he's, he's then shifted to say, well, this is actually a two-story now, so that's what he's saying now. Okay, so, as long as I'm okay on the height, I, I, all I can say is, everyone that's looked at this property except for your neighbor has said that this is a, a single-story property. Except for the.
To include the.
To include the.
The assessors, the building commissioner, the building commissioner did not refer that, did not say, you need to go get a variance because you're looking to build a three-story. The building commissioner did not interpret it that way. The assessor's office did not interpret it that way. And, and while I do, I do respect the fact that if you do believe that there's a negative impact on the abutter, I, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to change your perspective on that, but I'm just, all we're doing is we're building up the very modest addition, nine feet up, thirty feet away from the property line. And then we're under a restoration order with the Conservation Commission to put brand-new plantings along that property line. So we're really not, we're not going to impact this abutter in any way. And the arguments that are being advanced are really, really being advanced to, to really stop the project more than anything else. Because there's been a long history, including police reports, between the abutter and my, and my client.
Can we just go back and look at the two thousand nineteen tree line? Trees that were there and trees that weren't there?
Are there any other, red herrings?
Any, any other what?
Red herrings.
Well, I think, I think the, first of all, I don't, trees can be topped. So if he, I know, if it's trees on his property line that, that are, that are the issue, they can be removed and they can be topped, even if they were, if within the buffer zone. What we're talking about is a permanent improvement. And clearly, again, nine feet on that side where the sun comes up detrimentally impacts Mr. McCauley's property.
Let's take a look to compare the house on the right-hand bottom, right-hand side. That went from a single family with a variance to a, I mean, a single story to a double story. That building is now two stories high. Let's look at the shadow of that compared to the shadow.
It's two stories in this picture.
Yes, correct. We did a variance on that one a while ago. See the shadow right there?
Yep, yep. Where is?
The rear property line is closer to the tip of that roof versus Island Road to the property line.
Those property lines are off by quite a bit on that map, by the way.
I.
Representative of.
But where's the house?
Ryan's house.
I can't see the abutter's house.
His house is up there. Island Road is to the bottom, the six Island Road is right there.
So that rear property line isn't even close to where the actual property line is on this particular map.
What time was this taken?
It looks to be about noon time, to tell you the truth.
Which is gonna cast the least amount of shadow.
I have a plethora of photos too I could bring to the next hearing, so if there's ones that.
Time of day and season are gonna vary.
Correct, and I'm gonna say that the.
But that's, how much longer could that shadow get? You know?
Depends on the time of the year.
In winter.
That's it, right, that's what I said.
Winter barely makes it, barely makes it over from where I showed you that photo on my phone, that tree line. The sun barely makes it over that tree line. Okay, so she goes up in the wintertime, I'm.
However, she's going to have to restore trees that we're taking down, so that.
None of those trees right there were impacting, the, most of those trees that you see were cut down by me that were closer to my house that were, I was on the shadow of her house. Anything that she had growing there wasn't along that property line, okay? That big, you go back to the other photo, the tree that upset me the most was the gorgeous beech tree. That was a couple hundred years old, that was technically the city's tree, not even hers, because it was so close to the street. That was the only one that would have casted shadows onto my property that should've cut.
Now, that's two thousand fourteen and fifteen aerial images.
I think that one's early spring, and I may interject, because you can see the sparseness of the leaves on the trees. I thought for some reason it might have been.
Right, and that one looks like it's an afternoon.
It's a moot point. Did some of her, some of her cutting of trees, it could've added positive, I, I, I don't, not on the solar panel thing. I don't. Personally, I, it didn't add any value to my life or enjoyment of my property. I like nature, so, especially all the trees that were moved on the front, and its negative impact on the environment and all the riprap and everything else that was done, hurting the turtles and all the other wildlife and the fishing and the temperature of the water. I mean, that, that had a, a big impact on my life and still, still bothers me today, because that was not in the spirit and value of why I bought my house out there.
I just wanna be clear that the previous neighbor installed this riprap as a result of a conservation order. I, I had established the, a permit issue, so I didn't think the conservation documents were important. But there was various conservation hearings with the prior neighbor where he was ordered to install the riprap that the gentleman's talking about. And most recently, we were back in front of the conservation, where we were doing the restoration plan, and they had made an indication that they'd like to have some of it removed. Of course, I objected, and I said, geez, you know, you told her, told the property owner, the prior property owner, to put it on there, and they put it on there, and now it's being, so we, we did agree that, and that's part of the restoration plan, is to remove some of that riprap. So whatever the Conservation Commission wants us to do there, we're gonna do.
So I would say there's two points we gotta, we gotta figure out, which is if it's significantly detrimental, and then what to do about the mean grade plan, if anything.
Well.
Table six point two, continue.
I, I, I believe in professionalism in our town employees who evaluate this, coupled with my eye that tells me that that's a basement, and that it's completely surrounded, other than a hole in the ground. Which then leads me to the hardship, because water must just rush into that home. So I don't have a problem with those. I don't have a question about those. I'll make that clear.
Well, how does going up do anything about water rushing into the home?
Okay.
That's not being addressed by going up, that's just creating a more non-conforming.
I think at this point, do we have enough information to close the hearing so that we can deliberate amongst ourselves?
I have enough.
I have enough information.
I do.
Having a.
And there's nothing else you guys wanna add before we do that?
Not that we haven't discussed already.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Could I entertain a motion to close the hearing?
I will make a motion to close the hearing.
And do I have a second?
Second?
Well, in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. And at this point, we're gonna deliberate amongst ourselves. If we have specific questions for any of you, we will ask you specific questions. However, this is a deliberation between us, our board. So. We will deliberate. Do you have any comments?
Well, I've made quite a few.
Okay.
I think that this business with the decks, are they legal and they aren't, the size, yada, yada, yada. You're talking almost seven hundred square feet, which, would they consider reducing that from the size of what they're trying to put up? You know, just to make it a little bit smaller, the building itself. The deck stay, that's not the issue, the just, is to remove them as being part of the, the square footage to the increased fifty percent mark. To me, that, that, if you reduce the size of what they're trying to build, might make it a little less invasive. I think that taking into consideration whether it's trees or if it's, whatever it is, it depends on where the sun comes up, that's gonna affect the light, and anybody that, you know that, it's a common sense thing. The permits could be granted, but I think if they want to reduce what they're trying to do and keep it within reason, reason, and, and it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful layout. It's, it's gonna be a beautiful setup, but I think it's on a lot that's true, that does, is conducive to its size.
So just to be clear, we're talking about the new model, which we didn't see that, that huge, big one with the garage and the two roof lines has been totally chopped in. I wanna say it's less than, the new proposal is about a third of what that original proposal was.
It's like somewhere between forty-eight and fifty-four percent or something like that.
That's what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, that's fine. Is, Ryan, I think there has to be a meeting in the minds here somewhere.
So.
And we're drilling it into the ground over basically nothing.
Pretty much said we would never approve that huge, huge thing.
No.
No, because that was like a hundred and whatever you said it was, forty percent or something like that. So they, they went back and they, they redid it.
It was like three hundred percent or something like that.
And just, just so we're all on the same page, it's, it's somewhere around fifty percent, plus or minus.
Okay.
Four.
And depending on.
Just so you know.
I get that part, but I think that it's overkill on the size of the, what they're trying to put in, and I think you could reduce it by taking the footage off the deck, the truck and seven hundred square feet.
The decks are already existing, they're not.
I understand that, but reduce the, the size of what they're trying to put onto that second floor.
They did, they went from twelve feet down to six feet.
Okay, let's talk about doing it again.
If you have a, I don't know if you could have a three-foot deck.
I don't, I don't know that you could.
I don't think that would even hold a person.
Well, then you wouldn't have one, would you?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I don't know, I don't think.
The deck. I don't think the deck is an issue.
The, the deck is facing the, the water on the second side.
I'm not talking about that deck.
Oh, you're not talking about the second?
No, I'm talking about the decks that are downstairs, that have been established there for ten years, seven years, whatever. Reduce the footage from the dat deck, those dat deck or decks, or whatever you wanna call them, from the building that you're putting up on that second floor. Reduce the size of the unit somehow.
On the bottom deck.
He did, like, physically take it away, or just in your calculations?
No, take it away. Not remove the decks, I'm trying, the space, the amount of space that they're trying to put up there.
My, my position would, would be that if we accepted the mechanical room, the reduce, reduction in our numbers taken earlier from the ten to the six, then we fall below the, the fifty percent.
Which is allowed.
Right, which is not.
Which is allowed.
Right.
We don't employ any, can you say about that?
The other thing that I would add to it is I, I, I think the abutter, while stating that there were issues of shading and things that would be detrimental to the property, failed to make any actual scientific or calculations to give us any numbers as to what those, that might be. I, I heard that they were detrimental, but I don't, I don't see it. I don't think going up restricts a view of the lake any more further than it is.
Already.
Currently. Those would be my thoughts on those.
And, and I, I echo that, because that's exactly what I was thinking, is that. I don't, it obviously would affect his far line of sight on that tree line, and whether that's a detrimental effect, I don't know.
I know when they did my solar, they came in, they did all of the tests to tell me whether I can do solar and where I can do solar and what impacts that and how it, because they have their direction on how they do that.
Right.
I haven't heard, I didn't hear any of that.
Sure.
In the testimony, I, I, I just heard hearsay.
And I don't, like you said, I don't think it affects the, the view to the water.
From my own eye, correct.
Right, well, from the wind, from the picture.
And, and from our, we did go there.
So, so I, I agree with your assessment there, I, I don't know, I mean, if they're under that fifty percent mark, we don't really have anything to say about that.
On Island Road, on the east side, we have given variance and special permits to at least three homes to increase their square footage. And we saw the drone picture, the first one, like, right opposite six, we did that one, and we did the one next to it. And then we did Brian and the Day House, the next one down. Then going around the corner, on Island Road, I think it's the one actually next to the L-shaped lot of McCauleys, we gave a variant, a special permit for that one to increase its non-conformity. So there are four houses in that area that we've, that have been improved from the original cottage camp, whatever, footprint. And having a, several really beautifully well-done homes in the neighborhood, and Ryan's is a newer home too, and it's very well-kept, and it's, it's very nice, it's a nice-looking house, and a nice-looking property. This property, as the property owner's lawyer mentioned, is a little bit less than pristine.
Subpar.
Considering the neighborhood, so improvements.
Can you pull up the six point two point three bylaw, and I wanna read that? I, I agree.
We're talking special permit, not variance, so we don't have to prove the hardship, hardship. We don't have to do any of that size-shaped topography of the land.
When I looked at this, in this bylaw, when we were, when I was communicating with Nicole about it, is that it, it talks about, and it alludes to kinda what the gentleman was saying about when bylaw is implemented, that's when you take the square footage measurement or, or whatever, you know? But, and so what I'm thinking is, so say we, we pass this through and everything, and then twenty years from now, somebody wants to build another fifty percent on, how are we deciding that that fifty percent is based off the beginning or, or off of what we just did?
My goodness.
Do you know what I mean?
That's a very good question. That's a wicked good question that I've never thought of.
Because if, otherwise, they can just keep, and I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm just saying theoretically, what are we doing to, to stop that? Because the, the language isn't.
Generally, there's a one-time, one-time use or.
I don't believe we've ever, we've ever run into that.
No, but do you see what I'm saying?
Of course. How would you, how would you keep track of it? But everything's recorded at the registry deeds.
Correct. Right.
Or it is now.
You can condition it.
That's all you can work with, is what you know now.
Yeah. Because, so, where is it?
Oh, my goodness.
Six point, is it two point three or three point two?
Oh, two point three, sorry. There we go.
But there is no pre-existing special permit.
So, but if it was six point two point one, and what it says?
You can't change it unless.
And then?
It's burned, accident.
Six point two point two is the one I'm referring to, right?
Right.
So any building structure or use of land devoted to non-conforming uses, or any building structure or use of land considered non-conforming at the time of adoption of this bylaw. So what does that mean? Does that mean when that bylaw came into play, that's the square footage you go off of? Regardless of any permits.
Changes.
Changes, anything, and so.
I, I think regardless, it doesn't apply here, because the, the timeframes that we've kind of established are beyond the ten years.
This didn't say anything about ten years. This says when the bylaw comes into play. So when that bylaw was instituted, it goes off of the square footage of what existed. Or when the house was built, depending on what comes first, that would be the square footage you'd go off. In either case, it wouldn't include those decks. So I'm not saying that's how we, we, we rule it, but that's, that's what I asked Nicole about, because I didn't understand kinda how that works. And then how does that affect everything?
But the decks would have been before this.
Yeah.
So is it this version of the bylaw, or the version before? Because they were pretty much the same, non-conforming uses have not changed over the course of, since like nineteen, when the house was built. And. Good question, though.
I mean, you see what my dilemma is, so.
Let's go with what we have.
Okay.
I'm just thinking first, that totally changes a lot of things that we've already thought about in the past.
That only applies to.
I know, I know.
That only applies to reconstruction and restoration.
Right.
Doesn't apply.
And then there's a timeframe too, twenty-four months.
Expansion.
Right. So if damage are destroyed...
Oh, but damage are destroyed, okay.
Yeah, the 6.2.1 is, you don't have to tear down a building because it's changed, because the zoning has changed. You can continue to use it as you have, but you can't expand it. You can't do anything.
That's just saying that you could build whatever was there prior to the adoption of this.
Agreed.
And then, and then we have to look at 6.2.3 because that's all the contingencies under the B.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I think you're right.
Did you apply your own red herring?
What's that?
Seriously, sorry. So what are we thinking, folks? It's getting late.
Yes, it is. I, I think it's a special permit. I think that we've done the calculations. We've looked at everything. I would base it on that it is currently a one-story, that we have through the assessors' information. I would like to use those numbers. And you base it on that. They are within the fifty percent. And I would, I would...
Would you like to turn that into a motion?
I would, okay, sure.
Before you do that, should we, should we lay out our contingencies? So you don't have to stop and figure them out at the end of your motion.
You have contingencies? Okay.
Well, it'd be that, that upper deck.
Yes, it would be six feet.
That it would be to the plan?
To the plan.
To the plan.
That would be...
As per plan dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Correct, and all state, local, and federal laws have to be complied with, including our Local Conservation Restoration Act, Conservation Restoration Plan, rather.
And not to exceed the discussed height?
That's per the plan.
Per the plan?
The height, well, height, height per plan?
Yep. Yeah, I think that kind of covers it.
We do need to mention not a detriment to the neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay. You ready?
Sure.
Are you, have you, okay.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we accept the plans as presented dated, what was the date again?
Let's just double-check just to make sure. Plans is dated...
Those which are posted on the internet, on our
Yes.
Town site.
That were presented at last meeting. October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
October eighth, twenty twenty-two?
October eighteenth.
Eighteenth. October eighteenth.
October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And that it does, it meets the fifty percent rule and that
Upper deck.
It does not, well, that it's built to the plans that are presented, which the deck identified there is six foot...
I think it was six-six, but my memory's not clear.
Right. And by, yeah.
Comply with the regulations.
Yeah.
Yep, that it is not a detriment to the neighborhood and that it complies with all town-state conservation regulations. And we had no other, nothing else.
That was it.
That was it? All righty. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any more discussion? Call a vote.
Discussions, additions.
Anything else? Any additions, corrections? All righty, let's call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
With reservations.
Aye, with reservations?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. All right, thank you. So, thank you both for your thorough presentations.
Thank you. Good job.
I think we have an agreement that substantially scaled back from the original proposal, substantially scaled back. And that was what we were looking for originally. And I think nine feet higher may be whatever. So the decision will be written. We need to sign it, stamp it in with the town clerk. She will, that office will notify you all about everything. And we have the twenty-day appeal period.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So much.
It's been an experience.
All right. Are there any upcoming hearings?
Uh, there's going to be one. We're going to have a meeting on the nineteenth
Of?
Of April.
Of April.
Yep.
I've been looking at that clock. It's eight-thirty.
I know.
Oh, it's not.
It feels later than that.
It says ten-thirty. It says ten-thirty on it.
Oh, no, it would be twenty, twenty minutes to ten.
I'm going to get out of here. Can I have a motion to end this meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.